For those wondering, we're waiting on a commission members attendance or not. So those of you that are patiently waiting in the audience, thank you very much for your patience. We'll get started just as soon as we're given the green light. Welcome to the November 2nd, 2023 meeting for the Mobile City Planning Commission. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. This meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing and deliberation. In public hearing, an agenda item is called where the applicant makes their presentation. Commission members ask questions and members of the public are allowed to make comments to the commission. Only four people speak for an agenda item and four people against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. That one minute, a speaker will hear a warning bell or beep prompting you to please summarize your comments. After any opposition speakers have finished, an applicant is allowed a two-minute rebuttal. If you do intend to speak, come to the podium, speak into the microphone in the middle of the room, provide your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, the staff, or the audience. After hearing all applications, we will go into deliberation where we will discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. Commissioners will then vote on each application. The results of that meeting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise during the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, we do have the discretion to allow additional comments to address the issues and resolve them or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, a commissioner may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. That does not mean they are directly involved with the application or the applicant. However, depending on the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal, even if there is the only slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary, if available, will vote in their stead. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of these decisions to the circuit court. Planning Commission is strictly a recommending body for the rezonings, conditional use permits, and planned developments. The city council makes the final decision on these applications. All appeals of city council decisions are to the circuit court. At this time, do me a favor, please turn your cell phones to silent or vibrate. Any other electronic devices as well, commissioners and staff, please turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll go ahead and call the roll and we'll jump into the agenda with a brief announcement. Myself, Jay Stubbs, President, Mr. Kirk Matei, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Ms. Shirley Sessions, Mr. Larry Dorsey, Mr. Chad Anderson, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Emberger, Mr. Josh Woods, Mr. Harry Brisland, Mr. Kenny Nichols. We do have a quorum on all of the agenda items with the exception. I will go ahead and move for an adoption of today's agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion for the agenda passes. Announcement for agenda item number eight. We do have a recusal among the six members of the planning commission. We had another member who was planning to be here today, but an early arrival of a newborn has prevented that from him being here. That being said, I do believe the applicant is present and has discussions with staff that a holdover for two weeks on agenda item number eight is okay. We have nods in agreement. Since it's on the agenda item and that item will be held over, anyone speaking for that agenda item, if you're here to speak for it or against it, please raise your hand and let me know. All right, since it's on the agenda, do we want to have the public hearing for it? Do we want to move this to the holdover? Absolutely. All right, since it's on the agenda, we will go ahead and allow anyone speaking for this agenda item. This is again, public hearing for agenda item number eight, but again, it will not be voted on today due to quorum issues. Mr. Kenny Nichols is recused.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Greg Sad. I'm the principal owner of Sad Development Corporation. We've been located in Mobile since 1982, based here in Mobile. My home address is 34432 Stillwood Ridge Road, Loxley 36551. My business address is 3601 Spring Hill Business Park, Suite 200, Mobile 36608. I'm gonna take a moment to first ask, make the point that the application that we've submitted has a good bit of information in there and while we, because of time, we can't cover all of it, please refer to it from time to time if you don't mind and you'll see that we've made a case for this application. I come today before you to request a, two applications. First is a zoning application to convert the subject properties from R1 to B1. That is buffer business. The second application is to convert the subject properties, plural, from three lot subdivision to a single lot subdivision. The properties are located, for the record, at 355, excuse me, 255, 257, and 259 Dogwood Drive, Mobile, with 255 fronting Airport Boulevard of about 300 feet on the road. We have, the total property combined consists of 2.82 acres and is on the screen as you see. We have had the property completely surveyed, including topographical maps, including tree surveys, so we could identify the critical trees that we feel are candidates for salvaging and preserving their natural landscaping. Our team executed a site search for this project for the past almost four years. The zone that we were targeting, as you'll see in the application, was between McGregor, Ozea, going west on Airport Boulevard to Bittensborough Road. The goal was to find a site of two and a half to three acres on Airport Boulevard that would qualify for the project. Obviously, if we had found a site that was already zoned, there would be no purpose to be here. There's not a site. So we sought out this property based on data from previous work by the neighborhood and started pursuing to plan for this project. Now, I want to stop for a moment and mention this. I know the city of Mobile does not take into account deed restrictions, but I do want to make the point that in March of 2017, the majority of the neighbors, of the owners of this subdivision, voted to terminate all of the restrictive covenants. I want to make this a very important point. The folks who did the termination, who voted, could have very easily carved out and just said they're releasing the sites that CVS went on. That's not what they did. They absolutely terminated every restriction in the subdivision. So it was, it was a blanket termination, not a alteration of the restrictive covenants. Otherwise, if that had not taken place, we would not even be here today. It makes the point that while there are obviously records that show that there have been changing conditions in the area, this was the one that opened the door up, yes, for CVS, but now for this parcel, which fronts Airport Boulevard, as I mentioned already. In complying with this process, which I want to commend the city, this is a very good process to go through for zoning. I took several personal actions to help inform the neighbors of what was going on. First, I reached out to the abutting property owners themselves to ask for a one-on-one meeting. We were able to meet with two of them and the whole point was to try to let them hear what I had in mind and what they thought of it. Second, we held two neighborhood meetings that opened the door up for discussion, again, to get feedback. Third, we held a unofficial Zoom meeting with our traffic engineer to allow all the neighbors, anybody to participate that wanted to from that first meeting, or anybody in general, to speak with the traffic engineer that conducted the traffic study and ask any questions. Let me stop right there. We took the proactive move of commissioning a full traffic study for this project and the only instructions we gave them was the potential use, and that is general office and a potential financial institution that would have two drive-throughs. That's what the traffic study was based on. I want to make a few very basic points about what we've achieved during this process of meeting with the neighbors and having discussions. But first of all, let me say this. This is a B1 zoning request. This is the minimum commercial zoning that one can have. And it is, in the ordinance itself, the ordinance spells out that B1 is specifically designed to abut residential neighborhood and buffer the residential from commercial, such as the CVS and other LB2s and B2s and B3s. So when we look at fundamentally, does it qualify for a B1 request? It fits right inside the zoning ordinance criteria. That's what it's for. Next, I want to point out that when you look at our plan, we, because of discussions we've had with the neighbors, you can see that we exceeded virtually every requirement of the B1 zone. Deeper buffers, in fact, one of our buffers near the southeast corner is 60 feet or better of a buffer. The other buffers are 20 feet as opposed to the ordinance, I mean, the code calls for five feet in some situations and 10 in others. So we have exceeded every bit of that. We have, we have, the topographical map of this property shows the flow of the topo falling from south toward Airport Boulevard north. So the water flow goes in that direction. Do I need to slow up?
One minute.
One minute, okay.
Summary, summary, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll summarize it up. I know there was an issue that was brought up, one of the issues was about flooding, but I have assured these neighbors and I'm certain that my record would reflect, we will absolutely design to more than the minimum requirement to make sure that we maintain stormwater management both during construction and after construction. So I do want to make one last important point because the issue came up about more zoning to the east, more zoning to the east. I had complete title work run on all of those properties. To the east, they're all deed restricted. They cannot be used for commercial unless the neighbors themselves decide they're going to be used for commercial. That's an important point. The last point that I want to make is there was a gentleman who had brought up about, there were so many sites available up and down. I'm sorry, but you gotta fit the criteria the way it matches up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Again, it's number eight, listed at 255, 257, and 259 Dogwood Drive. Seeing none, I'll now open it to anyone who speaks, wants to speak in opposition to this agenda item. We do have comments, point out to the commissioners, we do have comments on your iPads, both in favor of and in opposition.
Good afternoon, my name is James D. Andrews. I reside at 970 Lansdale Court, Mobile, Alabama, in the Regency Subdivision. I've been living there with my family for 35 years. And so I have some experience in living in and around this proposed development. The fundamental thing, I guess, I'm here today in my own regard, as well as a concerned neighbor and citizen. But Kathy O'Keefe, who is on our Regency Neighborhood Board, would normally be here, but she's not available and asked me to kind of speak in her stead. So some of the comments that I would relate have been put into the website for the Planning Commission, but I would like to kind of address those briefly. The real concern is infrastructure capacity for runoff. You know, I was driving down Airport Boulevard going east, crossing University in the middle of a thunderstorm and the water was at about a one to two-foot level in front of CVS, having overflowed the holding pond there. That's a significant concern when you look at taking down this many more trees and taking that neighborhood and turning it into a commercial zone. You know, what is that going to do to the runoff? What about the holding ponds and their ability to withstand the type of deluges that we get in Mobile, Alabama? And I can assure you, in the 35 years prior to CVS being there, I never saw an overflow like I did on that occasion. Moreover, you know, Kathy indicated that she had spoken with the engineering group and asked a question. Have those pipes under that ground been upsized to handle CVS? Well, if so, why are we having flooding? Have they been upsized to handle this development? If so, can we count on not having even greater flooding? Do you have an answer for that as a commission? So, you know, these holding ponds fundamentally get silt-related. They fill up, they have, you know, growth, and they don't hold as much water as they used to. And what is the, how does that remediate it? Well, only until you have flooding and somebody complains to the city of Mobile that there's no overseeing body that makes sure the thing is clean all the time. So in her, she's also talked to Bert Hoffman in the planning department and noted that there's no engineering drawings or notes that on the holding ponds located, being located or identified at this time. So her fundamental question was, was that she's very uncomfortable with approving development that has so many implications for other property owners and so little detail on the status of the infrastructure, especially when you consider this. It took a court judge to rule finally that CVS could build that place, you know? And in that regard, you know, living there, if you want to get to CVS, you can't do it hardly because you, if you're traveling westbound. When you put this many more buildings and you want westbound traffic to get over to these structures, these new entities, just what's that going to do? Because you wind up backing up traffic into Airport Boulevard. Has that been reasonably considered? I travel by there every day. So when you look at flooding, you look at traffic, you look at the effect on the neighborhood, the people that live there, is this really that necessary? And I'll close with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Is there anyone else in the audience here to speak in opposition to this agenda item? I saw several hands raised when I asked that question. A reminder that only four people can speak against an agenda item. We've now had one, so that means we have room for three more. Please go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Candy Robin, 317 Dogwood Drive. I live eight homes to the south of the proposed site. I'm a property owner, a resident, and I am opposed to the application presented today. I'm no stranger to the Planning Commission meetings. I was told even reprimanded by my elders back in the day, when I was a much younger version of myself, to present the facts, take away the emotion. And I did try, but found it incredibly challenging to remove the passion that one feels when they have situations arise that threaten the very thing that they love. I would like to clarify, Greg Sad stated, and I quote, "Subdivision voted to remove all residential-only restrictions," end quote. That's simply not accurate. I'm a resident, I did not get a vote, and I have since found discrepancies that could quite possibly prove otherwise. Past and current trends say, and I quote, "Changing conditions in the area make rezoning necessary and desirable," end quote. The simple answer is yes, absolutely. There have been definite changes to the surrounding area. Government Street Highlands was divided with the development of University Boulevard, leaving 41 homes to the east and the remaining 12 to the west. The impacts of that division continue today. With properties now fronting Southwest University, two homes were vacated, moved or torn down, and there have been attempts to commercialize, but as of today, those properties remain undeveloped. A corner of Dogwood and Oak Ridge, which backs to East University, was vacated, home removed, in an attempt to subdivide and build, but as of today, that property currently remains undeveloped. And of course, there was the highly desirable and sought-after southeast corner of Airport and University Boulevard. We lost four residential homes when CVS was built, which greatly impacted five residents, one directly to the south and four east of the development, which brings us to 255, 257, and 259 Dogwood Drive in today's application. The city of Mobile's Build Mobile Future Land Use map clearly shows the area in question remaining residential as it should be. I'd like to bring to the attention of the staff the decision made in 2018, whereas the Planning Commission denied another project with said reason. And I quote, "The future land use map depicts the site at hand and all properties on the south side of Airport Boulevard to be, to the commercial development of Azalea Road as remaining residential in use. The requested rezoning would not be consistent with the recommendations of the future land use map. If approved, the rezoning to the site may also set stage for properties to the east along Airport Boulevard to be subject to pressures for conversion of commercial use, resulting in additional rezoning requests. Thus, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning will weaken existing neighborhoods that abut Airport Boulevard. The site, unlike the court-ordered rezoning site to the west, does not have frontage on two major streets, but instead only has frontage on one major street and a minor street. This distinction lessens perhaps the justification of extending the commercial zoning further along Airport Boulevard," end quote. We should preserve our neighborhoods and especially be kind and appreciate our older neighborhoods. And despite the changes of the surrounding area, Government Street Highlands, now 77 years old, continues to be a thriving, diverse, lovely place to call home. By allowing a new development to change in the surrounding area, this development, if allowed, will directly impact the neighbors to the immediate south, Rebecca and Michael Bowen, and will also directly impact properties to the immediate east on Summit Drive, Hillview Subdivision. I respectfully ask that the commission deny the request and maintain this area as residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robin, I think it's Robin Robbins, all right. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to agenda item number eight?
I'll talk briefly, sorry I broke my jaw. It's okay. Rebecca Bowen, 265 Dogwood Drive. I'm not British. Sorry to not plan anything, but we bought our house two years ago and we have a two-year-old son. We moved in about a month before my son was born and we loved the property. We've been born and raised in Mobile. We love being able to find this piece of property that was almost a whole acre to where we knew we're going to have a little boy, we could let him play in the backyard. We knew we had neighbors, but it's very wooded kind of in so many ways that we really don't see our neighbors very much. We like that privacy. And while we met with Mr. Sad and I know all of his buildings truly are nice buildings, just knowing that we're going to have a very large structure right next door to us, and yes, it is close up to Airport, but it's still going to be able to come and see into our backyard. Our privacy is being taken away. Our privacy is being taken away, and I'll be honest, I would not have bought this house if I had known that we were going to have a 14,000-square-foot building right next door. Yes, I know CVS is across the street, but that is not impeding into my backyard where my two-year-old's walking around, running around naked, and then having people looking in the back windows into our backyard. We love our house. We don't plan on moving, but this definitely is not what we thought we were getting into when we purchased a house in a neighborhood with a street. And we've made friends with our neighbors. We've, you know, there's been a lot of younger kids and, well, not that young, but younger adults with younger kids now building and buying in the neighborhood, walking up and down the street. And this just takes away the neighborhood feel of what we did have. I mean, I know we live right off of Airport. I'm not naive to that. But my other concern is, while I know Mr. Sad did the traffic study, I still can't help but see how that's not going to bring more traffic, people cutting through, trying to be able to come and turn, make a right onto Airport to be able to turn into that building if the turn-in lane is on the... on Airport Boulevard. I still feel like they're going to come down Airport, and my house is right next door. I mean, it's non-pictures, but it's right there. So those are just our concerns. I mean, my husband and I love our house, but I definitely want to keep what we have. And while I think so, I don't doubt Mr. Sad's building will be beautiful. It's my neighborhood. It's where I live, and I don't want some big 14,000-square-foot building right next door to it. So I guess that's all I have to say. Hope y'all can understand me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. We have room for one more opposition speaker on this agenda item. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. A reminder that the applicant will have a chance for a two-minute rebuttal.
Good afternoon, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. My name is Evan Duffy. I reside at 272 Summit Drive. Here, I have the rather enviable situation of residing right next door to my girlfriend at 276 Summit Drive, so I'm kind of here speaking for both of us today. I've lived in a neighborhood since 217... 2017, but before that, the house was my grandmother's. She was one of the first people to live on the street on Summit Drive in Hillview Estates. And, you know, I could talk a lot about traffic, and traffic there is bad. If you've ever tried to get out of one of those side streets onto Airport at any time, there are times that I sit there waiting 10 minutes just to turn out, going with the flow of traffic, let alone trying to get across. So traffic is an issue, and we heard this a lot when CVS went in, that traffic studies were done, and flow would not be impeded, but that's just not borne itself out. Flooding, of course, I think would be an issue. As I said, I've been associated with this property for all of my 48 years, and I've seen flooding worsen over the years, to the point that Airport Boulevard becomes absolutely impassable during those summer downpours that we tend to have. The noise is something I haven't heard mentioned today, but since the CVS building development went in, there are times that you can barely speak to one another... to another person outdoors over the door roar, and that's not even counting those explosive cherry bomb tailpipes that we hear and people with PA systems playing their music at all hours of the day and night, people up there spinning wheels and stuff in parking lots. So I don't feel like this is going to do anything to help that situation, and we have a very tranquil, peaceful neighborhood there. Our neighborhoods, the Government Street Highlands, Hillview Estates, and Jackson Heights comprises one of the largest residential areas in Mobile. It's a tremendous asset to our community, and at a time when, you know, there's not as much residential property to meet the demand, a lot of folks are renting nowadays. I just feel like it's a terrible decision to knock down more houses to build something that's going to be to a detriment in everybody else in the neighborhood. Now, my property does not directly back up to the proposed development. Mr. Sad has done his due diligence and has been very forthcoming with the information he could share, and we do appreciate that. But regardless of that, history is something that cannot be undone. When you destroy it, it's gone. So if he's wrong, and our neighborhood suffers as a result of this, there's nothing that can be done to fix that. There's nothing to be... You can't put 100-year-old oak trees back in the ground, you know. So we are just definitely against this proposal, as we have been against every proposal. My grandmother, for, you know, the 55-some odd years she lived there, fought every one of these, and we feel like despite the talk about the covenant and that kind of thing, that this would project would be a keystone that would continue to allow development along Airport Boulevard, which would erode the residential aesthetic and tone of not just our neighborhoods, but also the Jackson Heights neighborhood. So I'd just like to ask you to take that into consideration as you consider this proposal. We just would really like to keep our neighborhood intact. We think we have something really special there, and I would like to one day be able to pass the property down to my children and not have a office development in their backyard. So thank y'all for your consideration, and I'll surrender for the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. At this time, the applicant has the right to come up and rebut for a couple of minutes.
Not a whole lot to rebut. I want to thank the neighbors. They've been very respectful, not just today, but also throughout our discussion. So we have a difference of opinion. I get that. I can... I do want to make the... So thank you very much for how you've handled it. I promise y'all, I had nothing to do with her jaw, okay? Nope. But let's... Let me hit a few important points. Again, going back to flooding, measure the application based on what I'm telling you today and what the ordinance and regs require. We are going to over-design this. You can tell by the site plan itself that we've added tremendous green space. In fact, the requirement is for 15% green space. This is upward of near 40%. There's a lot of green space there to help absorb water runoff, not to mention that we're going to have detention areas. We're going to put in a system that is going to maintain the stormwater right there where it's supposed to be. Yeah, somebody mentioned the word "Build Mobile". Yes, that's all beautiful stuff in the comprehensive plan. It's a great comprehensive plan. Let me mention this, that this is... This is a almost textbook fit for what that comprehensive plan encourages, and that is, don't go and build more sprawl. Try to find a site that's internal, that's got all the infrastructure there. Apply the correct zoning use, which this is, B1, abutting residential, to buffer from other commercial. This is infield development. This is classic what that comprehensive plan encourages. So please go to that and give it consideration. Regarding the privacy fence, I respect that. I've offered, and I've told people this, I do not want to put up a big old brick wall because we'll have to take down a whole bunch of oak trees. Instead, I put in the proposal, I will install a new...
Just wrap it up. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll install a new, very special sound wall that is durable and beautiful and will help protect from sound. So just please look at the entire application. Again, I want to thank the commission and the staff members, but also the neighbors. Thank you for being so respectful with me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Another reminder that this agenda item, due to quorum inability to fulfill a quorum, we will be voting on this, and will be on... back on the agenda for November 16th, if I'm not mistaken. I will, at this time, any comments or commissioners from... comments or questions from commissioners that are present today?
Mr. Chairman, if I can address the drainage stuff for just a second. We were the city's aware of those drainage issues that have happened in very, very large excessive rain events. Post those events, we identified a blockage that was in one of the downstream pipes, which Public Works has successfully removed. Now, can I say, well, that fixes every rain event that we have in Mobile, Alabama? This, we all... We all know that that's not necessarily true, but that was... There was a blockage that was causing the system to back up, and that has been resolved. As far as the design systems, you know, this site's going to be required to go to a 100-year, two-year design storm event, which is the extreme that we go, so hold back a lot more water, let it go back, let it be released very slowly. Part of the challenge with this being an old neighborhood, there is no drainage retention in it. In fact, there's very little, if any, underground drainage at all. So every bit of the water that drains off of it sheet flows, and it sheet flows down the road, across the properties to the street and to Airport Boulevard. So this development actually should help the drainage, especially with it being on an extreme case. And we're also going to ask that they not take advantage of what we refer to as historical credit, where there's properties that, you know, whatever their impervious footprint was in 1984, often those properties get a credit for that. So we are going to ask with this site to not take advantage of that and go to the more extreme design standards. So they're doing everything that they can. Again, and, you know, I feel like this development should ultimately help the drainage that's out there. Oh, and one last thing, as far as the inspections. Any new development today requires the owner to have the site, the drainage systems and their structures inspected every year by a certified engineer, you know, so they just can't walk away from the site after one year and, you know, not revisit it. So every year, they're required to submit that certification to us, you know, not just by their resident manager or themselves. It's required to be done by, you know, by a licensed engineer, basically proving that the system is still functioning as it was intended. So a lot of safeguards are put in place to make it, you know, make it as good as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for staff. Do you want us to address the holdover for number eight, or do you want us to go ahead and, for the sake of time, move on through public hearing?
Technically, you cannot take any action because you do not have a quorum. It's automatically held over to the November 16th meeting, so you'll need to go back to Agenda Item Number One.
Thank you, Kenny Nichols. Agenda Item Number One, holdover subdivision of three lots, just over six and a half acres at 1109, 1111, and 1113 West I-65 Service Road North. Planning Commission cannot consider this application due to not in good order paperwork. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Is there one here to speak against this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to new application. Number two on the agenda item, 2274 and 2278 Halls Mill Road, Elliot's Place subdivision. This is a subdivision of one lot, just over 1.6 acres. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with, sir, the seven conditions listed, should the commission vote on this? Okay? The applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Again, 2274 and 2278 Halls Mill Road. Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to number three on the agenda, another subdivision of two lots at two acres, 6065 Range Line Road, KP Range Line subdivision. Is the applicant present? Staff, I don't see the applicant present. Are you aware of any issues or concerns with the conditions on number three?
We have not received any feedback from the applicant or agent.
Okay, the applicant is not present, and staff hasn't received any feedback from the applicant or the agent. Is anyone else here to speak for this agenda item at 6065 Range Line Road? For it? Yes, sir. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, my name's David Osborne, and I'm not the applicant, but I have an interest in the subdivision, in that I'm trying to purchase the one-half of that property, that two-acre property, to the north. And I don't know of any issues having to do with the division. And I was under the understanding that Cleveland Properties was going to, even though they're in Connecticut, was going to send some information to the commission here in favor of that subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Is there one here to speak against this agenda item at 6065 Range Line Road? Seeing none, we'll move on to number four on the agenda, 1106 Ross Street and 1202 Bernice Hudson Drive, the Bascom Track subdivision. This is a subdivision of two lots, just at... just under four-tenths of an acre. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. Are you in agreement with the eight listed conditions, should the commission approve this? He is in agreement and... Present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number five. This is a rezone of 1065 and 1067 Schillinger Road South, rezoning from single-family residential or R1 to Community Business Suburban District B3. Is the applicant present? The applicant is present, and with the rezone, there would be six findings of fact and two conditions. Are you in agreement with those findings of fact and two conditions?
Yes.
The applicant is present and in agreement, should the commission vote an approval of this. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? On the rezone in this District Six, are any questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, a subdivision and a rezone, a dual application at 4305 and 4315 Halls Mill Road, kitchens persons subdivision, subdivision of two lots, just over four acres, and then a rezone from B3 to light industry... and, excuse me, a combo B3 and I1 to fully light industry district I1. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. On the subdivision, there are 10 conditions listed. Are you in agreement with those conditions? Applicant is present and nodding yes. On the rezone, there are seven findings of fact and two conditions. Any questions or comments regarding those on the rezone? The applicant is nodding no. No questions on those. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item at 4305 and 4315 Halls Mill Road? Anyone here to speak against it regarding this rezone and subdivision in District Four? Any questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to the last agenda item, number seven, 4354 and 4364 Halls Mill Road, HMR One subdivision. This is a subdivision of one lot at one and a half acres and a rezone from R1 and B3 to a combination I1. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present, and we have a winner. Come on down, sir. Name and address for the record.
My name is Daniel Clark. I'm at 2609 Halls Mill Road. I'm here for bird serving. We are in agreement with everything in the report. There was one mention of another possible rezoning option, a CW zone rather than I1, but we would like to confirm that we would like to have the I1 zoning. It's surrounded, I believe, by I1. And this is just the residential lot that needs to be rezoned.
Any comments from staff regarding that suggestion from staff?
It was just provided as an option. If the proposed use of the property would be able to operate under a rate lower zoning classification, that was what staff was suggesting, that's all.
All right. Thank you. Duly noted. Is anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? And again, that's number seven. All right, seeing none, we will now close the public hearing session and open up deliberation. We'll go back to number one on the agenda. That's a holdover. The applicant is not present. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Denial. New items, new subdivision. Number two on the agenda, 2274, 2278 Halls Mill Road, Elliot's Place subdivision. Applicant is present and in agreement with the seven listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for subdivision passes. Number three on the agenda, 6065 Range Line Road, KP Range Line subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of technicality, the commission does need to waive the width-to-depth ratio of the subdivision regulations. That's Section 6, C3.
On number three?
Correct.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded with a waiving of the width of 6, C3. By the way, applicant was present and in agreement with the nine listed conditions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? The motion for subdivision passes. Number four, eleven oh six Ross Street and twelve oh two Bernice Hudson Drive, the Bascom Track subdivision, two lots. Applicant is present and in, and in agreement.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for subdivision passes. Number five, a rezone, ten sixty-five and ten sixty-seven Schillinger Road South. Applicant is present and in agreement with the findings of fact from R1 to B3, and two conditions listed. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations, adopting findings of facts A through G and the two conditions.
Properly moved and seconded. Since it's a rezone, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number six, dual application, we'll take them separately, forty-three oh five and forty-three fifteen Halls Mill Road, the subdivision, um, Kitchen's Persons subdivision, two lots, just over four acres. Applicant is present and in agreement with ten listed conditions on the subdivision. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On the rezone from B3 and I1 to a combination I1 of these two lots, entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations. A, C, D, E, F, G. Commissions one, two, three, four.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Since it's a rezone, any discussion among commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number seven, forty-three fifty-four and forty-three sixty-four Halls Mill Road. We have dual application, we'll take them separately. Applicant is present on the subdivision and in agreement with ten listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations on the subdivision.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes. On the rezone, applicant is present and had a comment on the option of C, C3, but has opted to stick with the applicant, application to I1 from R1, B3 to I1. Entertain a motion for the rezone.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations, adopting findings of facts A, C, D, E, F, G, and con, conditions one through three.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Since it's a rezone, any discussion from commissioners? All in favor for the rezone?
Aye.
Any oppo, any opposed? The motion for the rezone passes. And again, finality on number eight, we cannot vote as Mr. Nichols will have to recue, so it will be automatically held over until the November sixteenth Planning Commission meeting. Any further business from staff?
Yes, sir.
Meeting adjourned.